All right, let us call to order the special meeting of the Glendale City Council for September 20th, 2022. Call to order at 2:08 PM. May we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Councilmembers Asatyan.
Here.
Brotman.
Here.
Devine.
Here.
Najarian. Mayor Kasakian.
Here. Thank you very much. May we? We have three items for this afternoon portion of our city council meeting, the special meeting. Can we have the first item read into the record?
Yes. The first item is Public Works Regarding Fleet Electrification Study. A motion to note and file the report and direct staff to implement the fleet electrification plan.
All right. City Manager Galanian.
Yes, thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor Kasakian, Member City Council. This item being presented to you this afternoon is in direct response to a request by Council Member Brotman for a feasibility study of electrification of our fleet. We have gone through, staff has gone through the process, hired CTE as a consultant who has done an extensive research, interviews, and analysis, and I am going to invite Mr. Imran, Director of Public Works, to introduce the consultant team and the project team, and then go into the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Galanian. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of city council. This is, we're very excited for presenting this plan to you this afternoon. It's taken almost a year to get to this point. There's been a lot of work that's gone into effect by our staff and our consultant, CTE. So without further ado, just a quick word about CTE. They are a national firm. They're actually a nonprofit, 501(c)(3) planning and engineering company, and they specialize in electrification and these types of studies and reports. And they're going to go over our process and what it would take to electrify our fleet, not only in terms of the capital outlay, but also the infrastructure requirements. I'm going to introduce Steve Clermont and Leslie Udi to come up and start the presentation. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Thank you so much for having us here today. I'm going to skip through some of the slides. You get a brief introduction of our firm, CTE, Senator Transportation Department, and the analysis. First of all, some quick background about, yeah, sorry.
Your life.
All right. How's that? Is that better? All right. First of all, some background about the project. Soon, California is going to provide or have some regulations requiring municipal fleets to adopt zero emission vehicles.
Excuse me, I'm going to interrupt just for.
Yep.
Can we make sure that, by the way, our lines are open? Are people able to call in? Because I had one person just try and send me a message now, saying that they had tried to call in and they weren't able to. So, we're okay? All right. Please continue.
That's called the Advanced Clean Fleet Regulation. So there's something that the city should keep its eye on as that regulation progresses. Secondly, the city of Glendale is evaluating the requirements, evaluating their needs for moving to 100% zero emission vehicles. And so as a result of that, even listed CTE, our firm, to conduct that study. So we started work on the project in November of 2021. One of the first things to do was to collect information and data about the duty cycle and vehicle types that you have in your inventory, conducting a market analysis of what type of EVs were available that could potentially replace the vehicles that you have in your fleet. Look at market readiness. So we see a lot of vehicles out there in the market, but not all of them are quite ready for commercialization or ready to actually implement in your fleet. These type of things may take some time. As part of our process, we did visit with the city, looking at six of your sites. We've wrote our report, including the details for each site, as well as the entire transition plan. We do recommend to all of our customers, going through a transition plan, this is going to be a 20-year journey for you. So the technology is right now really at the beginning of that genesis. We expect to see a lot of improvements in that technology. So we recommend that you keep this plan as a dynamic plan, updating it probably at least every two years, and review and adjust it as the market changes, as your requirements changes, as your duty cycles change. So we considered both electrification scenario to 100% by 2035, as well as by 2040. Both of those scenarios were given the same consideration. However, we are recommending the 2040 scenario. And the reason is, is that the 2040 scenario, we believe, provides you with a little bit more risk mitigation to actually achieving that goal. It's going to allow time for the market to mature. You have a lot of specialty vehicles in your fleet right now. It's going to take some time before there's adequate replacements available for you. Probably most importantly is building out that infrastructure to support all these EVs that you're going to have. This is going to take some time. There's tremendous supply chain issues in the market right now. So these are going to take some time to sort through. So that's why we see the 2040 scenario as being a less risky option.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah. Question I have on these two scenarios. I was told in staff briefings that there really isn't much of a difference, that the 2040 plan has us getting to 85% by 2035. So the 2040 plan has us getting to 85% as compared to adopting the 2035 plan, which has us at 87. So 85 to 87, it almost seems like that's insignificant.
So, yeah, I think you're referring to what would happen with those scenarios by the year 2035 and.
Yeah, I'm saying the 2040 plan, where would we be at 2035?
Right. Exactly. So I think we said that you'd be about 85%. So you're right, there's not much of a difference there. And I can go through some of the logic of why that was as we go through the presentation.
And what really that difference is? Because I'm, just based on that, I'm thinking they're basically the same plan.
Actually, if I may, the Councilmember Brotman, the 2035 plan is, has us at 85%, I believe, and the 2040 has us at 97%. So there is a big difference.
At 2035?
2035 is 85%, and 2040, I believe, is 97%.
At 2035?
No, at 2040.
At 2040.
No, but I'm saying, if we adopt the 2040 plan.
Yes.
Where were we in 2035 compared to adopting the 2035?
85%.
Right.
As opposed to 87%?
Right.
The difference is very small.
Okay.
Okay. And so I just, maybe through your discussion, if you could explain, maybe there are other nuances that are different between these plans?
I think the biggest nuance to it all is when you're, when you set that goal, you know, the 2035 goal, and you say you're going to be at 87%. I think you're, versus when you say, make a statement where the 2040 goal, you'll be at 97%. Yeah, I think you're at greater risk at maybe not achieving the 2035 goal, versus I feel more confident that with more time, you'll be able to achieve that 2040 goal. I think that's the only nuanced difference between the two scenarios.
Okay.
And we can, you know, again, we can go through some of the things that will, can affect that percentage over time. It really comes down to the rules that we use to define that transition. Okay?
Okay.
So we did apply our methodology, our transition methodology. It involved collecting data about your fleet, the operational data, the amount of fuel, the amount of miles, the duty cycle of your vehicles, doing a market study of EVs that might be available to replace the actual vehicles that you have in your fleet, going through a concept of feasibility and suitability. I'm going to go through that in a moment. And then developing a timeline for EV replacements based on a series of rules that guide you through that timeline. Finally, we look at fleet costs, I mean, I'm sorry, but we do look at fleet costs, but also fuel costs, maintenance costs, and then, of course, infrastructure, which is a significant endeavor for you. You have a diverse fleet spread across. We've looked at primarily six facilities. There's actually some vehicles that are stored at other facilities. We didn't look at those facilities because we didn't think that there'd be a significant capital infrastructure requirement at those facilities because of so few vehicles. Once we identified the vehicles in your fleet, we looked, again, looked out at the market to see what might be available to replace those vehicles. Probably we were looking at, again, light duty, medium duty, heavy duty. And part of what we saw out there was, you know, there is medium and heavy duty vehicles, but right now there's chassis that can then be developed into specific applications for your fleet. So the transition rules, and this is really what drives the analysis, this is what drives the development of your plan. And you can always change the rules in order to change your plan, but these are the rules that we stuck with in order to develop the plan. So first of all, annual EV procurement targets. So this is where we want to define a specific percentage of procurements or EV procurements each year during the transition period, and I'll get to that back in a moment. Secondly, to consider what's needed to meet the California regulations. And again, so those procurement percentages may need to change over time as the regulations are enacted or changed over time. The second rule, again, asset replacement schedules. Our plan shows that we're replacing vehicles at the end of their natural asset life. So you can retire, choose to retire vehicles early in order to get more EVs early, but this is the rule that we've established here in this analysis. Third is duty cycle feasibility. So everyone's heard the concept of range anxiety. So we look at feasibility, and feasibility is based on a couple of things. Number one, the amount of energy storage on the vehicle. Number two, the duty cycle for that vehicle, how many miles it's going per day, the topography of your environment or the roads that it's operating on, and the climate that you're in. These all, all these three, four things affect the efficiency of the vehicle, and therefore the range, and therefore the feasibility of a vehicle operating in that duty cycle. Finally is suitability. I've referenced before that there may be some vehicles that potentially are available in the market, but they may not be suitable for the particular function that you require that vehicle to perform. So we want to wait until the vehicles are suitable before you do that replacement. So we look at all these four rules, you know, every year during the transition period to determine which vehicles can be replaced in a given year. So I referenced the annual EV procurement targets. These are the target schedules that we looked at for 2035 and 2040. So what it's saying, for example, in 2023, if you were to replace 100 vehicles next year, 10% of those vehicles, we're recommending you replace them with electric vehicles. The other 90%, you could continue being internal combustion engines. And the goal here is to get you to 100% by 2040 or 2035. If you notice that there's not a whole lot of differences between it, you can see that in the year 2026, 2028, and 2030, there are some differences, but they're fairly slight. So Councilmember Brotman, I think when you referenced this 85, 87% difference, it's really, the result is because those percentages are not, there's not a significant difference in between those numbers year over year over year. So that's why you're seeing percentages about that level. All right. Now.
Yes.
Can you explain cannot violate the other fleet transition rules to meet the target?
Ah, okay. So again, this is a rule that we impose on ourselves in coming up the plan. You can choose to violate the rules if you want to accelerate your plan. However, what we're saying is, let's say, you know, in a given year, there's, you want to replace 50% of your vehicles, and you pick out 50% of that you're going to replace with EVs. But then we determine, well, the vehicle that you're replacing, it's not feasible to replace it that year, meaning it doesn't have the range that you require for that duty cycle. So we're saying, don't swap that one out. So you could choose to swap it out, but that would be a violation of the rules. Follow me? Okay.
Can I ask a question also? Yeah. So these, I'm trying to understand what these numbers are, because I know they're a different set of rules which have to do with how you're categorizing different vehicle types, right? You're one to five, and you're saying if it's a one or a two, right? If it's a one or a two, it gets replaced. If it's a three, I think you're saying, maybe we look at it a little more closely. If it's a four or five, they just don't exist. So what if, and I guess those get revised every couple of years because the technology's changing. So if we say that we're following that rule, we may be able to exceed these numbers potentially if there's a lot of technology movement. So are these kind of, what are these? Are these kind of like just estimates today for what you think is likely to happen? Or are these rules somehow that we follow?
So again, the, these rules for the procurement are trying to get you to the 2035 or 2040 100% zero emission, based on either, you know, if the regulations were in place, and I'm going to come back to that point in a second, or based on the asset life of a vehicle. So if a vehicle should be replaced every seven years, or every 10 years, or every 20 years, we're trying to create a percentage where you're really considering moving those vehicles. Also based on the assumption that, you know, due to the incremental cost of these vehicles, even if they were feasible and suitable at any given year, you may not want to make that investment all upfront in the incremental cost of these vehicles. So we can play with these numbers a little bit to change the percentages where they come out with, and it's just one of the drivers, one of the four drivers of the schedule. Okay?
Okay. I'll hold my comments on that till.
Thank you for that.
So let's, let's talk about achievability and feasibility as one, because again, this is one of the rules. So when we did our market analysis, looking at the types of vehicles in your fleet, we also look at how much energy storage is on that vehicle, what we expect for efficiency due to topography and climate, and as a result, what those ranges of the vehicles might have. Now, each one of these types of vehicles in your fleet may have a different duty cycle, all right, ranging from 0 to 200 miles per day. So for example, when we look at, let's say, a medium duty van, all right, we expect that if you're, that van was going 70 miles in a given day, we consider that to be achievable. All right? You're able to easily do that, that range under any conditions, all right? And remember, with an electric vehicle during summertime or during wintertime, when you're running the HVAC, it's a lot less efficient, you get a lot less range. So when we come to talk about achievability, we're considering those worst, worst-case conditions. All right? The uncertain, you know, if that vehicle had a daily duty cycle of, say, 100 miles, it puts it in the uncertain category. So on a nice day, it'd probably be fine. On a, on a really bad day, really hot day, really cold day, you might not be able to make that range. So while we'd recommend the replacement to occur in the, for vehicles with it that have a duty cycle in the achievable range, we wouldn't make the recommendation to do that replacement if they had the uncertain range, or certainly the unachievable range. Okay? So when we look across your fleet and see what type of duty cycles each one of your vehicle types are doing, the good news is that there's, you have a high percentage of feasible replacements. Okay? So this is really good news, with the exception of a couple of vehicles. So for example, like dump trucks. So again, you have a variety of daily duty cycles on these vehicles, and what we're saying is 60% of your dump trucks out there have a short enough duty cycle that they could feasibly be replaced today. All right? The other 40%, we're saying their duty cycle is too long, that today we would not recommend a replacement. However, we do expect technology to improve over time, so feasibility is going to improve over time as well. So that's another reason why you're not going to replace all the vehicles all today. You're going to wait until the duty cycle is feasible to replace. Then we come to the concept of suitability. This is where there might be a vehicle out on the market today. It might be a prototype or demonstration vehicle, but it may not be something that you want to consider going, running out to buy right away. You want to see more miles or experience on that particular platform. So, so we created, for every single vehicle type, we created the suitability score to say whether something was, have low suitability or medium suitability, if there wasn't enough demonstrated experience with that vehicle in the marketplace versus high suitability or very high with, there's a lot of vendors that are offering the vehicle, there's a lot of other first adopters, early adopters that have taken a chance on those vehicles, and they've demonstrated that they are proficient and active, being able to perform in that duty. So this is the suitability score of each of the vehicle types. As you can see, there's a lot of light duty vehicles on the market today, very easy to go out, except for supply chain, but very easy to go out and buy these vehicles today. That's why they score a five very early on in the cycle. As we get, move down into the, increasing the gross vehicle weight rating of the vehicle, that's where we find less suitability over time. But with technology improvements, we expect this to change, whereby, once we reach the, you know, by 2030, we're expecting that most vehicles, actually even earlier than that, say 2028, most vehicles in your fleet will be, can be feasibly and suitably replaced. The exception here is some of the heavy duty specialty vehicles like fire engines. So even though there is a fire engine that is being sold right now, again, it's, it's a one-off. You know, we don't have enough data on that vehicle to really understand what the operational requirements are for that vehicle, and if it can feasibly replace or suitably replace one of the vehicles in your, in your fleet. So we push that one way out because of the criticality of that vehicle. You're not going to take a chance on a fire engine not performing to your expectation.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Could you go back to your, your one through five suitability?
Sure.
Yeah. So like on the, on the fire vehicle, I believe LA has one, LA has one in operation now?
Yeah.
And so, yeah, it's a prototype and all that, but it's not, not yet available, is it?
I don't believe it's available. I'm sure that the company will take, you know, additional, I'm sure they're stacking up a line of customers for future orders.
Okay.
But I believe that this is the first demonstration, you know, the first prototype of that vehicle out there.
Right. And if you go to the next slide, back to where you were.
Yep.
I mean, go forward, yeah. So you think it's going to take till 2029 before that gets out of category one?
That is, yeah, that's our conjecture on that one. It, it could, again, we try to be very conservative in our approach here. It could very easily come in to, come in earlier. I mean, right now, and Shay just gave me this information, because he did a little bit more research on this, but basically that vehicle operates on an internal combustion engine to go from the firehouse to wherever the, the location is. And then it will operate for two hours on battery mode to operate pumps and auxiliary equipment. So it's not truly a zero emission vehicle. So we have to wait until that propulsion system goes all electric to be considered totally zero emission, or maybe it will be exempted. So I, and then as far as two hours, it's probably not sufficient amount of time to operate that vehicle at a, at an emergency site for only two hours. So this is where I think it's going to take a lot longer, especially it's going to take a lot longer to understand the, the operational capability of those vehicles and how well it can meet the city's requirements for those vehicles. And I think there's a wide gap right now. So over time, I expect that gap to come down. And maybe you would, you know, if you typically might have several fire engines responding to the same event, you know, you could start out with one or two and slowly grow from there, but always have an internal combustion engine until there's a significant amount of confidence built up in that, that equipment. Again, it's more the criticality of, the critical nature of the vehicle that is causing us to be a little bit more conservative and speculative about when that might be suitable to replace.
Okay. But these, again, are conjectures. So we might, we might go out two, three years, and LA's been working with this, and we find that, you know, hey, maybe it's, maybe it moves to a two earlier, or maybe it moves to a three earlier.
Absolutely.
So that's, okay. As long as it's, we think this is dynamic, we're going to keep looking.
Absolutely. And this is, this is, again, this is a concept that we invented on this project. This is the first time it's ever been presented in public to anyone. Just, just so you know, this is all an evolving market, but we're pretty excited that this is a way to try to, try to manage and measure your transition, because it's not just about a vehicle being available out there. Is, is it suitable to perform the operation that you expect it to perform?
Councilmember Asatyan.
If, if you're being conservative here, and by 2035, we're at a five for all of them, and you're suggesting the same with feasibility, why are you recommending 2040?
So, so the other fact, well, first of all, I think you noticed that the 2040 scenario didn't go exactly to 100%. Even though I'm saying it's suitable here, and it's feasible, and it meets all the other criteria, part of the problem is the replacement schedule. So I think we, that the, the asset life of the vehicles, you're replacing fire engines in the early 2030s when it's still a one or a two, and that's why you have to replace it with an internal combustion engine vehicle according to our rules that we established. And so you're going to be, you're going to have that vehicle in your fleet conceivably for the next 20 years. So this is part of the, the other challenge with the schedule and why you're not achieving that 100% is because we're looking at the asset schedule, asset life schedule and that replacement. So it's just kind of a nuance of your replacement schedule that causes those percentages to be as they are. Did I answer your question? Okay.
Thank you.
So taking all those four rules into consideration, this is where, what happens with your transition each year. So as you can see, the height of that graph represents the total number of vehicles that you're purchasing in a given year. The green represents the EVs that you're purchasing. So as you can notice, your, the percentage of EVs is increasing more and more every year until 2031. I think that year ended up being 100%. Actually, in 2032 and 2033, there's a little bit of, there's a couple of internal combustion engines, and those are those fire engines that were not suitable for replacement in those years. This is how your fleet composition looks over time. So again, 2040, we get pretty close at 97%, and that it's really just those outlier vehicles that couldn't be replaced in their earlier procurement cycle. Again, if we see suitability moving more rapidly than what we're predicting, then you should be able to make that 2040. I know you had, your question was regarding why we recommend the 2040. The other factor, in addition to all the procurement, is the infrastructure, the risk associated with getting all that infrastructure built out in time. So in a lot of cases, you may not be able to follow the schedule that we've outlined because you may not be able to get that infrastructure built out in time. And a lot of that's due to, currently due to supply chain issues of transformers, switchgear, these type of things. There's going to be a heavy demand for electric vehicle charging equipment coming up in the next few years. So, all that may cause the infrastructure side of the equation to slip. So, that's why we're saying there's less risk with 2040 if you have more time to get the infrastructure built out. Annual fleet purchase costs, again, you, unfortunately, electric vehicles are more expensive than internal combustion engines vehicles, and that's why you see each year your costs are higher than the red line, which is your baseline, that represents the cost that you would have incurred if you had kept your current fleet composition. And this is just looking at it cumulatively over time. So, again, at the, at the end of 2040, your total transition scenario is $274 million. Again, that's, that's all the vehicles that you're purchasing. We're just looking at total cost that you're going to invest in, in your fleet capital over the next twenty years, including internal combustion engines, including EVs. So, just to represent how much higher that, that number is versus your baseline vehicle procurement.
Question? Councilmember Brotman?
Yeah, maybe you're going to get to this, but I know that there are lifecycle cost savings, fuel and, and maintenance. Are you showing that kind of on a lifecycle basis, what, what that differential is going to look like?
Yeah, we, we've got that in here, so, as well. And actually, I'm going to turn it over to my colleague Leslie right now to talk about infrastructure.
So, we made several assumptions when we look at transitioning the infrastructure. For, for this case, we looked at a one-to-one vehicle to charger ratio. That's probably your worst-case scenario. As technology for chargers improves, there are some higher level chargers that are available in two-to-one, but it splits the charge. So, we used a one-to-one ratio at this point. But as the technology improves, you could go to a two-to-one, or maybe, maybe even a four-to-one, and save some of that infrastructure cost. We looked at a build-out for each of the, of the six selected sites, and that includes the design, the construction of things like duct banks, conduit, you know, digging, digging, you know, digging up the yard to put, put conduit, and then the mounting pads, and the islands, and the stub outs for, for those chargers. So, we, we figured to plan that in two phases for each site. So, you would start out with your first phase, would install the underground infrastructure for about half the chargers you need at that site, and then there'd be a second infrastructure build-out for the second, the second half of chargers at each site. And then, so for individual chargers, we would have the stub outs put out at the beginning, but you might not need all of those chargers at the very beginning. So, as the vehicles are delivered, you would go ahead and install each of those chargers on those already stubbed out, stubbed out islands. So, that's the assumptions that we made for this. And then we looked at the EV charger types, and we, we ruled out level one, that's mostly residential. We're looking at level, we're recommending level two and level three at two different power ratings. So, what we'd assumed is for every light duty and, and medium non-emergency vehicle, we would figure a level-two charger with about ten percent spare capacity for extras, just in case, you know, you have some issues with chargers. And then for the level-three chargers at, at fifty kilowatt, we figured those for the heavy-duty vehicles, and then the DC fast chargers at a hundred and fifty kilowatts for the pursuit and the heavy-duty emergency vehicles, because pursuit vehicles do the hot swaps, they don't spend very much time, so they need to be charged very quickly. So, that's why we, we figured those a hundred and fifty kilowatts for the pursuit. And of course, the emergency vehicles will also need to be ready at a moment's notice, so you want to make sure you charge those as fast as possible. So, those are the assumptions that we used for the cost. We also met with Glendale Water and Power to talk about what make-ready infrastructure might be needed for each of those sites to be able to accept the power that we discussed with them that would be needed at each of these sites. So, this, this table was provided, it was estimates provided by GWP. And so, there was an estimate for the increased kilowatt or megawatts that they would need at that site to, to have a fully-electric fleet at each of those sites, and then the estimated cost. So, the caveat is, so you see the, the cost on the right-hand column for each of those, and the police, because we mentioned with the extra hundred and fifty kilowatt chargers for the police parking lot, that's why that one is so expensive at a one-to-one, that's a lot of power, and so it is your highest cost of all the sites. So, for this, it gives, the chart gives a subtotal, but then also, in discussions with GWP, they told us that the Acacia substation was built in nineteen sixty-three, and so it's got some very old transformers and things, and they would need to be updated, because if they, for the public, it supports the Public Works and the Integrated Waste Facility. And so, if you fully electrified both of those sites, it was going to run that substation up to about ninety-eight percent capacity, and that was not going to be sufficient. So, they gave us an estimate of what it would take to, to completely update that Acacia substation, and it's about seventeen million dollars. But it would include, because it supports Public Works and Integrated Waste Facility, that seventeen million includes the cost to support those two. That's why if you add all those numbers up, they don't exactly come out. You'd add them up and then subtract out the Public Works and the Integrated Waste Yard. So, they're looking at twenty-one point eight million to just upgrade the Acacia, the, all of the sites, so that they could actually have enough power to charge all the vehicles.
Question? Oh.
Yeah.
Councilmember Southier and then Councilmember Brotman. Go ahead, Councilmember.
So, there's a, some technology out there that allows for cars to, to charge themselves without the chargers. Have you taken that into account yet? It's called SEV.
I am not aware of that. Were you aware of that?
And then there are also solar chargers that don't need to be plugged in? So, have you taken that into?
So, the solar chargers, you most likely cannot put up enough solar panels at these facilities to deliver the amount of energy that may be required for some of these charging. Maybe at the, the Integrated Waste Yard, because there's a, a pretty good platform there. So, we haven't taken into account adding any solar panels here to add that capital to it, or, because it doesn't, thing is, it, you're not going to change what you may require from a facility upgrade, because regardless of having the solar available, that's great as an offset for the energy that you may need, but you're still going to want to have that power available to you when you need it, in case, again, most of your charging is being done overnight. In addition to solar, you need to buy battery energy storage to be able to store all that power. But ultimately, you're still going to want to be connected to the grid to be able to pull that power. So, even if you were to add solar, it's not going to change these costs here.
Thank you.
Yeah, two things. One, that twenty-six point five megawatts. Does, are they assuming that that's every vehicle charging at the same time?
So, did you want to answer that?
No, go ahead.
All right. So, yes, and it's not a very good assumption, but when a utility determines how much, that they, how much service they need to provide to a facility, they're going to look at the potential power demand.
Right, right, okay.
So, we are assuming that we look at the number of chargers that would be put at each facility and use that to determine what the installed power requirement is.
Okay. And did they all, did they provide a megawatt hour, like a load estimate for supporting all this?
I don't think we got that from them.
I don't recall that on the, what they gave us.
Something we probably.
And it was a high-level estimate.
Something we probably won't eventually, but yeah, thanks.
You would want to work with them closely.
Councilmember Devine.
So, I guess this is kind of academic, but this means that we're going to need more power, not necessarily through solar, but we're going to have to be able to provide the power for these vehicles and these charging stations. Up to twenty-six point five-three, is that, am I correct, megawatts?
Yeah, I think, I think the GWP will need to determine or, or answer that question as far as, is, do you have a, an additional generation requirement here? You may, you may not. You know, generally, if we're charging overnight, you've got a lot of power available in the grid overnight, and you don't need to increase your generation capacity. So, that's something that they would need to determine. What this is saying is that we need to upgrade the service in order to get that power to each one of the facilities.
And the challenge was in understanding, we might have the asset list with, with the approximate miles traveled per vehicle, but, but it was not something we could tell what time they would be out and in, and I'm not, and we're assuming that it's hard for us to know exactly if it was every day or three days a week, so we just kind of had it, had to assume kind of worst-case scenario. So, this would be like a, a maximum from what we could estimate with those assumptions. So, this chart shows the annual cost that we have for infrastructure over the year. So, they're by four different categories. The yellow is the GWP upgrades. We assume that each site would need some upgrades there at the very beginning in order for you to start installing the infrastructure. And then for that Acacia station upgrade, we separated into two years, so you see the second two bars that have the high yellow number. That's splitting it into two years. That's not likely what GWP, it might, would probably take more years than that, but without working with them specifically, we wouldn't know. So, for, for this, for this exercise, we, we put it into those, those two years split, split over to two years. So, the green is the installation, and then we assume that there's a, a design phase at the beginning for each, each site, and that that would include an overall site design for the whole, the whole project, and then that you would do an update of design. So, that's the dark, the kind of the brighter blue. So, you would do an update of the design, and then the, the light blue is the cost of the charger. So, you can see that's spread out. So, as you get the vehicles, you install the chargers while, but you'll use two design phases to get the, the main infrastructure in. So, you see a big spike at the beginning, because you're trying to get as many, the infrastructure for as many chargers as possible at the beginning before you start acquiring EVs. And then, because each of those sites might have a different percentage of EVs that they purchase, that second design phase gets, gets spread out between several years, from like twenty thirty on to twenty, or twenty twenty-nine through twenty, twenty, twenty thirty-three. So, that's why there's, that one's spread out a little more. So, that was the infrastructure assessment. Now, we spoke about the fuel assessment. So, this chart shows you the, the IC, what, what you, the cost for fuel, the yellow being what you're still paying for, for your ICE vehicles, and the green would be your electricity, your fuel cost is electricity. And the red line is your baseline if you just stayed with ICEs throughout time. So, this doesn't include low-carbon fuel credits. It doesn't, it includes, it excludes any charge management. So, you, you see that it's, it drops down there in the middle, but it's still about the same cost as your baseline. But there are a lot of opportunities for lowering cost with charge management, and so this just assumes like an overnight charge, except at the police department, which would be multiple times during the day.
So, just a couple more points on this. Actually, I was surprised to see that the EV fuel cost was, was on par with, with your current fleet cost. Most transition plans that we see, the cost of our electric vehicle fuel, the electricity is actually a lot higher. All right? So, the thing about electric vehicles is, you know, the good news is that they're four times as efficient as an internal combustion engine. The bad news is the, the fuel, the cost of the fuel is generally four times the cost of diesel, which is kind of shocking.
Mr. Claremont?
Yeah.
Could you speak closer to the mic?
I am so sorry. So, so generally, when we see fleets, you know, the challenge with, with fleets is that all that power is coming out of a single location. So, when we think about personal electric vehicles, yeah, there's tremendous amount of cost savings there, because basically there's one, you know, vehicle charging at somebody's home, let's say, and they can really manage their, their cost of fueling. But when we put all that power requirement into a single location to charge lots of vehicles at high power rates, then that's, the demand charges associated with that could really escalate the cost of those, of those vehicles. So, there is opportunity, I see a tremendous amount of opportunity, though, that these costs can be lowered with, you know, number one, the LCFS credit, if that continues, that'll be a good opportunity. Number two, charge management and optimization. That's where, you know, we're preventing charge, vehicles from charging at the same time. So, we didn't include that right now, because number one, I'm not really happy with what the charge management software is out there right now. I don't think it's very good, but it is improving. So, I just didn't want to assume that it could do all sorts of wonderful things for you right now. Secondly, the chargers themselves, Leslie mentioned before about the, you know, potentially going to two-to-one or four-to-one type of chargers. The charging equipment is, there'll, there'll be an evolution in charging equipment for vast improvements, which will help you control these costs. So, I do see that there's going to be a lot of opportunity to, to lower your electric cost requirements over time.
Question?
Yes.
So, this is not just the electricity cost. This is the cost of all the charging infrastructure and the electricity.
This is just the electricity cost.
Right.
It just seems so unintuitive, given, you know, personal vehicles. I know in my case, you know, my cost probably dropped to like a third of what it was when I started driving an EV. I don't understand charging more at the same time. I mean, the, the megawatt hour, the, the, whatever, the kilowatt hour cost is, is kind of a given.
You have two components. You have your kilowatt hour cost, and then you'll have your kilowatt cost or demand charge. So, they're going to charge you a certain amount for the kilowatts. So, generally for, you know, residential, yeah, my EV, I went from, you know, nine cents a mile down to two cents a mile, operating my EV. But, I don't incur a demand charge at my house, whereas a industrial or commercial facility, you could incur high-demand charges when you start stacking all these chargers, pulling energy at the same time. So, they're going to charge you for the demand, which is the amount of energy that you're pulling at a single time. So, the more vehicles that are charging off that same circuit, the higher the demand, the higher the charge is. And that's where we see the costs involved that you might not see at a residential environment.
But I don't know, I don't know if we have that in place today for, I don't know if we charge commercial customers. I mean, it's our utility, so.
Right.
Obviously, we're setting the charging parameters and, and all that. So, I don't, I don't know that we do that today. I don't know why we would assume we would do that to ourselves. I mean, unless the underlying cost of providing that power, you know, I don't know. These, these are things I guess we'd have to look at, because that's, to a large extent, within our control.
Right.
Yeah, I can't remember the number. We used the schedule, we used the business schedule off of the GWP website to, to do these calculations. And they had, I believe they had a demand charge.
So, they do have a demand, okay.
I believe they did. So, that's what we used, is the, the large business schedule. So, if, if for some reason they, you worked with the, your, your own power company.
Yeah.
To, to set a different rate schedule, it would make a big difference.
Okay, I, okay, got it.
So, yeah, the rate schedule is, like, like Steve said, you've got the cost that you pay for the individual kilowatt hours that you use to charge the vehicles, but you have this demand cost that's based on like the highest demand within like a fifteen-minute window. And unfortunately, when you hit that fifteen-minute window, I think it, it causes that demand charge to be increased for the entire month.
I see, okay.
So, one, one, too many people plugged in at the same time could, could make your monthly bill rather high.
So, it's really, I mean, because it's like one, one, one pocket to the other pocket, it really ultimately comes back to what does it cost GWP to provide this power to the city? Okay. Got it.
There, like Steve said, there's a lot of opportunities, we believe, to, to lower that cost. So, the maintenance cost, you, you talked about the maintenance cost. This is the same sort of chart, looking at what we estimate for maintenance, and the industry out there pretty, accepts, if you talk to them OEMs, they say it's a lot, lot more than it is so far. We don't have data to show exact, actual, you know, hard numbers, but we're estimating about a thirty percent reduction over time. So, if you look at this chart, the ICEs drop off as you, as you remove those, the cost to main, to maintain the ICEs drop off, and you see that you've got the electric vehicles charged, the cost to maintain is, is estimated to be less, and then your baseline fleet. So, you, you have savings estimated for maintenance over time.
Okay, so, we look at, we look at costs, at total costs in a couple different ways. So, one is, what ways. So one is what is your transition cost? And this is really the capital. So the incremental capital to purchase vehicles, um, for the first time, and then the total infrastructure cost. So with this plan, we're looking at, um, a total of 124.3 million dollars that we call transition costs. All right. And then we look at total cost of ownership. So this is again comparing all your capital, all your infrastructure, your fuels, cost, hopefully fuel savings, uh, and maintenance costs. And we look at that over annually for the entire period of time. So again, total cost of ownership, we're looking at everything, internal combustion engines, diesel, CNG, uh, electric vehicles, multiple procurements of those vehicles over this time. Again, just to try to get a, a flavor of how that might, um, how that compares to your baseline. And as we can see, there is an incremental over your baseline. So while you'll have savings on maintenance, and while you'll, we, you may have savings on, um, electricity, and even if we were to factor in a lot more savings on electricity, it's not, doesn't make up for the incremental cost for that transition. It's like, you're not going to save 124 million dollars in operating costs over the next 20 years. Uh, so it doesn't really pay for itself. Uh, but again, that's really not the reason why we're doing this. So, so again, when we look at the 2040 and 2035 scenarios, you know, we talked a little bit about this at the beginning of the, the, uh, our time here. Um, if you go to the 2035, we feel based on the rules, you'll reach 87% going out to 2040, you'll get to 97%. Again, the, the 22 buses are the outliers that were replaced with internal combustion engines in early 2030s because there was nothing else suitable, is the assumption. Fire engines, right. Thank you. All right. Yeah. Um, so what are, what are
Go ahead, Councilmember.
Can we just go back to that last slide?
Sure.
So what you have here, you, it'd be nice to see another line here, which is the life cycle fleet transaction cost. Cause then it would be, I know, I get what you're saying. We're not going to get savings of 124, but we're going to get some savings. It would be good to see that net number, whatever that is.
Okay. That's, okay. That's a great idea. We'll, we'll get that number for you. So taking the, um, essentially what we want to do is take this transition cost and, and map out the potential savings and see how much it reduces that 20, that transition cost.
Right. I think all the numbers are there. You have that chart which shows it. It's just, you don't have it added up there. Like you do the 124.
Yep.
Okay.
We, we'll get that for you. Okay. So as a result of the electrification study, um, we have a couple of recommendations for you for next steps. So number one, developing a detailed electrification infrastructure plan with the phased implementation at each facility. These type of projects can be somewhat disruptive at each one of your facilities and the disruption has to be planned for. So, and again, while we, we assumed two major construction projects to achieve full, uh, fleet electrification, whomever does the infrastructure plan may make a different recommendation to split that up into three or four projects over that 20-year period. Um, secondly, you know, they can be attuned to, um, developing the site layouts, you know, where are the chargers to go, where the transformers grow, um, all the utility equipment that needs to be going, because that may impact your layout as well. It may affect the flow of traffic through your facilities or where vehicles park. Um, so recommending that get started by third quarter of fiscal year 22, 23. Um, secondly, developing an impact and risk assessment for potential power outages. So being in Southern California, you're probably used to seeing potential rolling blackouts. How is this going to affect your operations? Um, how is this, and how do you mitigate against that? Again, it's important to do the study and not just assume that you should just double down on all the power needs or put in lots of additional, um, um, capital on, uh, solar systems or microgrids or anything like this. The, an impact and risk assessment really looks at what is the risk of an outage, you know, the frequency, the duration of the outage, when is this likely to occur? And then, um, if it's going to impact your operations, what are the mitigation strategies and how much does that cost? So example, if the blackouts, rolling blackouts only occur during, say, 4:00 PM to 9:00 PM, and you do your charging all overnight, maybe you won't be impacted by those power outages. Um, third, again, due to suitability, focusing on the light duty vehicles first in your, um, in your plan. Um, let's allow a little bit more time for the heavy duty, medium and heavy duty market to develop vehicles that meet your duty cycle requirements. Um, of course, part of that is deferring emergency response vehicles until very late in the transition plan. And then again, updating the plan every two years as technology improves and changes. It, you'll want to have this plan being dynamic and adjusted accordingly. So with that, we conclude. I thank you so much for your time today.
Right. Thank you very much. I know that there were some questions asked along the way, but, um, do my colleagues have any additional questions or anything that they would like to, uh, follow up on? Councilmember Brownman.
Questions. I mean, before we get into comments, I just wanted to ask, um, have you, have you considered hydrogen?
Yeah.
Thinking especially for the, the, what do you call it? The pursuit vehicles, things you need to charge really fast or, I mean, and then for some of these heavy duty vehicles?
Absolutely. Where we are actively have several hydrogen transit bus projects taking place right now. Um, you know, what we see in the market is, interestingly enough, is that a lot of advanced technologies start out in transit. And the reason is, um, because there's a lot of federal money available to help pay for, uh, the, getting that advanced technology out in the marketplace. Um, you have a, um, environment that is very easy to collect data and analyze the performance of those vehicles because they're on, you know, fixed routes and you have a professional, um, maintenance and operation, operating crew. So we see the technology get there first, and then it starts propagating out into other market segments. So we're seeing that with battery electric. It's starting to enter the heavy duty and medium duty markets. And those vehicles are, are, you know, rapidly developing, but it's really as a result of what's happening in transit. So again, we have hydrogen vehicles that started out in transit, and now we're starting to see that on, um, heavy, on long distance trucking as well, at least as far as demonstration projects. So I do believe that that technology is going to continue drifting down into more and more applications in light, medium, and heavy duty vehicles. And I think the key will be, um, that hydrogen will probably more focus on longer range vehicle requirements or heavier duty cycle requirements because it's better, it's well suited for that. Um, whereas battery electric, you know, if it's, you have small duty cycles, then I think battery electric will be sufficient. But certainly, um, you know, we need more development to take place on the light duty side and pursuit side in order. But I think that, that is coming, and certainly something you want to consider with some of your next iterations of the plan.
Okay. Second question is the new clean, um, advanced clean fleet rule that's coming. I know it's not, uh, approved yet, but I think there's, there's some pretty clear drafts out there, right? How does our plan line up with that?
The percent, the percent required, I believe in the, the AC, ACT or ACF rule is, um, slightly more aggressive than what we have here. I think they, that plan, I don't remember specifically, but I think it's either 2026 or 2027, they want you to be already at 100% purchase requirements.
Uh huh.
So that will have to be adjusted.
So if that plan goes through, and it looks like it will, um, we're going to have to revise this.
Yeah, this will have to be revised. You'll have to ratchet this up, but it's, but it doesn't change the risk that we talked about with infrastructure. So it actually makes the problem on infrastructure even worse because it's moving more vehicles earlier in the cycle. So that problem still needs to be somehow addressed, I guess, as, as you develop your next set of plans. And that's why it's important to get out in front of the infrastructure by, you know, developing that, you know, detailed infrastructure plan for each facility.
Right. I mean, what it'll help is, I think it'll help move the industry faster, and it'll help maybe free up some money from, for grants for us to do these upgrades.
Yeah, certainly so. Yeah.
Yeah. And then my last question is, what do we know about the LA plan? Do they have a target date? Do they have a 2040 date or anything like that?
For the City of LA plan, I mean, this, I, I'm not familiar with the, their municipal fleet plan, so I've just been focused on their, um, their battery, their transit plan.
Okay. Do you know Shay?
Uh, yes. Hi, Shay Eklison, Public Works Department. Their plan, the LA plan more or less is being written right now. They did go to their city council, their council approved a plan and, um, agreed to hire additional staff to carry out the plan. But when you actually look at what their plan is, it's really council providing direction to staff to develop a plan.
To develop it. So they don't have a date yet?
Right. So they're, they're, I, I, you know, read through their, their agenda and their reports, and it, it is more direction from their city council to staff
Okay.
to, or to the various departments for the City of LA to develop that plan.
So we're ahead.
This, this, this plan that we put together is unprecedented. Looking at this wide range of vehicles, um, developing a transition plan, there's no other city I could find that was doing this.
Right. I'd like to hear that.
No, you're, you're definitely right. I mean, we've only developed one other plan that was for a much, much smaller city. So you're far ahead of the curve in, in my opinion.
Thank you. Councilmember Devine?
Thank you. I just want to thank you for this, uh, really comprehensive report and all of the research that you did to get this. Uh, I look at it as kind of a roadmap on where we can go and what we can do in the next few years. I noticed in the staff report, it says on that, uh, advanced clean fleet regulations for certain classes of vehicles, local governments would be required to make sure 50% of all procurements are zero emission beginning in 2024 and increasing to 100% in 2027. So that's really almost draconian at this point in the game. But, um, I think it's really great. Um, your transition rules, um, I think are spot on. And I, I hope that, and I'm, I'm sure that staff is going to be updating this and probably, um, uh, working, uh, beginning to work on this immediately so that we can get started and, uh, and make sure that this doesn't sit on a desk somewhere and gather dust. This is very important. It's important to our community and, uh, and to the environment. So, um, thank you very much.
Councilmember else out there?
I'm comfortable with the 2040 over the 2035. I want to make sure that we're, uh, preparing for it properly, um, and being fiscally responsible. And I think that that's, that would be the way to go. So thank you and to the staff for working on this and bringing it to us today.
All right. I have comments, but.
Sure. By the way, and still no callers on the side? Okay. All right. Councilmember Brownman?
Okay. So yeah, first of all, thank you. This, this is great. I love when we're ahead of the curve, and, uh, that's where we should always be. Um, a few, a few things, given how fast the technology is changing, I'm, I'm, I think a two-year cycle to update the suitability, um, scorecard is, is a little too long. I would like to see that be an annual. Um, that's number one. Uh, number two, as I said, I would like to see the load implications from GWP in terms of megawatt hours, because that's something we're going to need to factor into all of our thinking. Um, the next thing I have is, um, I would, I'd like to see that. I, I mean, I like how you have the ones and twos would, would, would be adopted. Um, I would like in that category three, um, to, when vehicles are being purchased in the category three, I'd like council to, to take a look at that. I'd like that to come to us, uh, with, with, um, you know, some, some assessment of what's out there. What kind of risk would it involve for us to go for that? Um, so that we can look at those on a one-off basis in the category three. Um, the, um, you know, I would, I would, uh, I'd really like GWP to look at vehicle to grid. I think Mark's back there. I think that, um, you know, the vehicles that we have, those batteries on wheels, right? Um, uh, those, those are, I think, something that can be useful for, for helping us manage the grid and actually being part of this out, power outage mitigation plan potentially. So I would definitely like us to build that into it. Uh, I'd like us to look at hydrogen opportunities that would not involve load to the grid. Um, and, um, kind of interesting if we can get, get green hydrogen brought in. I guess you have to bring it in by truck or something like that. Um, and then, um, uh, let's see. You know, I kind of would like to see 100% goal just for kind of the, uh, the, the visuals, you know, like 100% by 2040. I know, I know we're a couple percentage away, um, but I would kind of like us as a council, as a policy issue to, matter to say, you know, we're going to get to that, even if it means maybe as we get to the very out years, we're going to, um, maybe take some assets offline before they're, you know, fully depreciated. I think this whole thing is dynamic. I don't really think that necessarily means a lot, because this is going to change as the technology shifts. And I'm pretty confident it's going to change in our favor. So I think that we wouldn't really be going out on a limb to make that, uh, a, a policy statement. And then, um, you know, the very last thing I'd say is, I think, you know, cities in this area have, can either kind of hold back and wait for the technology to develop, or they can lean in and be part of making the technology develop. And, um, and I'm glad that I have a sense that we're leaning in. I think that's the right place to be. So thank you.
Just, just on that one point on the, the 100%. So actually it was Yazden came up with a genius solution for that. And instead of retiring a vehicle at, at the end of its asset life, hold on to it for a few years until that ticks up to a four or five. And may only take a couple more years, just hold on to the vehicle and then you, you get your 100%.
Right. That, that's a great idea. Um, and actually, I was just reminded of one other thing. One other thing is, is maybe we can look at some vehicles that are not ready for, for battery electric. Are there opportunities to transition from diesel to CNG to at least get some, some interim benefit as far as air quality goes? I'd like us to consider that as well. All right. I know I had a lot, but I'm done.
All right. Thank you. Um, well, I want to thank you also for a very informative and thorough report. Uh, I wish more people would be, hopefully people will come back and view this, uh, online because, uh, as we've seen in our community, there's a strong desire for us to, uh, take steps towards minimizing our carbon footprint, electrifying as many things as possible. Just last week, we were talking about reach codes, and here we are, uh, having a very thorough discussion about what it will take to electrify our entire fleet. We're not just talking about, you know, buses. We're talking about every, every vehicle. And I think it's important for us to also, as we're having these discussions, be very transparent and open about what that would, what that means, what it means in terms of emergencies. Um, the good news is that, you know, we can get as close as we possibly can to, as, as we've noted to 100%, but, um, it's going to take work. It's going to obviously take a considerable amount of money and investment. But, uh, in terms of what that would mean overall for both, uh, for both the environment, for us as a city, uh, for future generations, it's, I, I want to commend my colleagues for having this discussion and steering our policymaking in this direction. I also would like us to see, uh, how we can look into hydrogen as an option, um, because there is, uh, there are cities out there that apparently are looking at hydrogen as, um, an option, both in, I don't know how much for the vehicles, but there's been talk of Lancaster, for instance, uh, using hydrogen extensively and, and trying to be more forward-thinking in regard to that. We here at the City of Glendale have been approached, I know the city manager, I know various colleagues have been approached by representatives of companies from overseas, most notably in Japan, that is trying to establish itself as a industry leader in terms of hydrogen, uh, as a source of, uh, energy. Uh, and in as much as we can find areas of cooperation with them, but there was at one point some initial discussion about, uh, locating a, a fueling station for hydrogen vehicles here. Uh, I think that would be of, uh, I would be interested in that, um, as well. I think the only hydrogen fueling spots in our area, there's one, I think, in Burbank. I don't know if there's anything I don't know if there's anything anywhere else.
For personal vehicles, we.
There's one here.
Sorry, for personal vehicles, there are several, but I think there's only one that's green hydrogen. The rest are, you know, dirty hydrogen.
Yeah. I think that was the only one I, I saw for, for, maybe it was green hydrogen. I saw one in Burbank, and I think it was closer to the airport. I may be wrong. So, don't hold that against me. I don't want anyone quoting me on that. But I would like us to see how we could help facilitate that here for some green hydrogen as well. Again, I think that it's good for us to have this goal ahead of us, but I also agree that if we can aim for, I think, 2040, it's more realistic than doing it quicker, just for the sake of doing it quicker. I will reserve my comments, and I know that councilmember Najarian, who's actually away on business at a conference and flying back in for this evening's meetings, will have some thoughts on this probably at some later time. But for this report, initially, thank you very much. Good job. Job well done. I will now entertain motions from my colleagues on this item.
I'll make a motion to note and file.
There's a motion to note and file? Would anyone like to second that?
I would like to, if I could, councilmember Devine, if you'd consider this, I'd like, I'd like to make sure that incorporated into that is the list of specific items that I mentioned, which I could just rattle off very quickly.
Shay was writing those down as you were.
Okay. One is annual updates, the 2040 hard 100% goal, category three in the suitability index coming to city council, looking at vehicle to grid, looking at hydrogen, looking at a CNG as a bridge, and then Yazden's genius idea, build that in as well. Is that, is that okay to include those?
Sure.
So, the.
So moved.
Councilmember Devine has accepted those items. Was there anything else that was missing before I move forward? All right. There was a second for it. We have, yes.
I just want to make sure we're clear. The record, the item that's on the agenda.
Is note and file.
File a report and direct staff to implement the plan, either 23 or 35 or 2040, plus with councilmember Brotman's suggestion. So I just want to make sure what I heard was the 2040.
2040. This is for 2040.
Gotcha.
Yes. All right. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmembers, Asatyan?
Yes.
Brotman?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Najarian? Mayor Kasakian?
Yes. Thank you very much. May we have the next item read into the record, please?
The next item is community development regarding consideration of a moratorium on new and conversion of existing drive-through waiting lanes. A, introduction of interim urgency ordinance prohibiting developments with new and conversion of existing drive-through waiting lanes citywide. B, motion directing staff to study and review drive-through waiting lane impacts. And C, motion to note and file report.
All right. City manager Galanian?
Mayor Kasakian, members of city council. This item being presented to you this afternoon is in response to a request from you, mayor, related to a potential moratorium on new drive-throughs, as well as modifications of, or conversion of existing drive-throughs. With that, I'm going to invite Kristin Asper, principal planner, to present this item for your consideration and potential introduction of interim urgency ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Galanian. Good afternoon, Mayor Kasakian, members of council. As Mr. Galanian stated, council requested a report regarding developments with drive-through waiting lanes. That's the technical term in the code for drive-throughs, with the consideration to introduce a moratorium on developments proposing new or conversion of existing drive-throughs. Am I not advancing this appropriately? In recent years, the planning division has received a growing number of applications for drive-through establishments. This includes both modifications to existing drive-throughs as well as new. Council and residents have expressed some concern regarding the impacts of drive-through rating, waiting lanes, citing increased traffic and pedestrian and vehicle conflicts. To address these concerns, staff intends to review the existing standards and study development trends to ensure that future drive-throughs minimize any conflicts. Thank you. If, for an urgency option, if council desires to introduce and adopt an urgency interim ordinance, a draft has been prepared and included in your packet. With this option, council would need to provide direction on what pipeline projects, if any, would be exempt. And I'll take this time to also point out here that a moratorium on drive-through waiting lanes doesn't have a direct cost or financial benefit. However, indirectly, the city would not gain associated sales tax or associated permit fees from future drive-through developments. For the non-urgency option, council may wait to impose a moratorium until a policy analysis can be completed. The study would look to understand the impacts of new and existing drive-throughs, review the zoning codes, existing standards, and study any development trends, including whether there is a need for additional drive-throughs. And so finally, just to reiterate, council may decline to introduce the interim urgency ordinance and engage in a policy study, may initiate an interim urgency ordinance imposing a moratorium on all developments with new or conversion of drive-through waiting lanes, and choose to consider pipeline projects. And lastly, any other alternative not presented by staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Do my colleagues have questions? There, yes. Councilmember Asatyan?
Do you have any indication on the impact of drive-throughs or the lack thereof for people with disabilities?
I have no information regarding that.
Thanks.
How many projects do we have currently in pipeline that would have asked to have drive-throughs?
There's currently one actual application, and it has received some level of design review. It is, it has received a return for redesign from the design review board.
That's the one down the street from here?
Two 16 to two 22 South Brand.
Oh, Brand, South Brand.
I'm sorry, South Glendale. I'm sorry, South Glendale. I apologize.
All right. So that's the only one that would be necessarily impacted if there was.
For consideration in pipeline, correct.
Okay. Because once it's at projects and there is a plural, I'm like, how many more folks want drive-throughs? I know we have some callers on this. Yes, councilmember Asatyan, did you have a comment? Councilmember Devine?
I just wanted to ask that we don't have to do a moratorium for this study. The study can, can be done without a moratorium.
Councilmember Devine, that's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, we have five callers on this item. I'll give three minutes for each, but I will say that after we're 10 minutes into the calls, we won't take any additional callers, because by that time, people should have had sufficient time to call in to express themselves and their views. So let's start with the callers.
Okay. Our first caller is Justin Mahramas. Justin, you're on air. You have three minutes.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. My name is Justin Mahramas, on behalf of Starbucks. Starbucks has used nearly as an ongoing approval process that's in the pipeline and has been in the pipeline for multiple years. The project is for a cafe with drive-through use. Implementation of the emergency ordinance would significantly hinder Starbucks' ability to continue to move forward with the project in timely fashion. As mentioned, the project is currently going into their third and final DRB review. It is actually working on addressing comments from the design review board and resubmitting for that final review. If council is inclined to move forward with either of the non-emergency or emergency ordinances, we respectfully request that Starbucks be exempt and be allowed to move forward with their approval process without delay. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much.
Our next caller is Mary Rosas. Mary, you're on air. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Good afternoon, mayor, city council. First of all, I'd like to introduce myself. I am the government affairs representative for the western part of the U.S. for Starbucks, based here in the San Fernando Valley. I'm born and raised in this community, but I'm reaching out because your team has done an amazing job in having conversations, thinking about what does a Starbucks mean to a community? How do we partner with the community leadership to build something that makes sense for that community and where we're enhancing and bringing jobs where employees will make a good living wage? They'll get jobs, they'll get health benefits, on and on, but it, it must be a dual process, including the community's input and sharing what benefits we can bring to you. So Glendale is the city that we all love and cherish. We want to make sure that whatever we bring to your community is something where you feel that the visibility is elevated, where residents, neighborhoods feel good about this opportunity. We are willing to work on our design to make it fit in as best as we see fit. So we are here to continue the dialogue with your staff at any level and make sure that we can represent our brand in a way that is conducive to the business and the vision of Glendale leadership. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next caller is Catherine Yerka. Catherine, you're on air. You have three minutes.
Hi. Thank you for taking my call. My name is Kathy Yerka. I urge you to pass an urgency ordinance that would place a temporary ban on new drive-throughs in Glendale. I became interested in this issue with the Starbucks project on South Glendale, and that's when I learned of the traffic and safety impacts that were happening all around the city in projects that had involved drive-throughs. I, I think that you should include pipeline projects. You should know that when the DRB first reviewed the Starbucks project, it was returned for redesign, and one of their conditions was no drive-through. And it was a condition that the Starbucks violated when they returned the project. I, I have disagreements with the city and with staff over some of the design decisions that get made in Glendale, but one thing I really appreciate about this city is its new turn toward pedestrian-oriented streets and a pedestrian vision for the city, and that is just completely antithetical to encouraging more drive-throughs. They have air quality, traffic, safety impacts, and I think that they, I think we really need to analyze this before we, before we allow any others. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next caller is David Juarez. David, you're on air. You have three minutes.
Good afternoon, mayor, councilmembers. My name is David Juarez, and I am with the California Restaurant Association, and calling to urge you to do the policy analysis and conduct stakeholder outreach on drive-through lanes without issuing a 45-day moratorium. The moratorium is unnecessary. Currently, staff assesses it as a necessary tool to either approve or deny permits, but issuing a 45-day moratorium, you're creating an issue for businesses without having a solution in place. Drive-through lanes are an important part of many businesses, especially now more than ever. There's a reason why public health departments throughout the country allow for drive-throughs to remain open at the height of the pandemic, when indoor and outdoor dining shut down. Not only do consumers feel safer getting drive-through, but do, but so do employees. Any conversation that has to do with drive-through lanes must acknowledge the public health benefits that it provides to the entire community. So for those reasons, I urge you to work with restaurants, retailers, pharmacies, banks, property owners, and the general public to find a solution before any action takes place. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next caller is Cole Basemore. Cole, you're on air. You have three minutes.
Good afternoon, Mayor Kasakian, councilmembers and staff. Again, my name is Cole Basemore. I'm a resident of the Citrus Grove neighborhood. I'm calling in today to ask that you proceed with alternative one and introduce an urgency ordinance imposing a 45-day moratorium on development projects with new and conversion of existing drive-through waiting lanes, and direct staff to study drive-through waiting lane impacts. As mentioned in the staff report, drive-through waiting lanes are prone to overflow onto city streets and across sidewalks, where they disrupt traffic and block pedestrians. This creates conflict locations that impact the safety of all users. As a bicyclist, I've been cut off by cars entering drive-through waiting lanes, and in some cases, blocked by cars parked in the bike lane itself. This is never a fun situation. The climate impacts are also significant. According to the U.S. Department of Energy, idling for more than 10 seconds uses more fuel and creates more carbon dioxide than turning off and restarting your engine. Unless drivers are going through faster than 10 seconds, let's turn those cars off and stop emitting more pollution. With a drive-through moratorium in place, a business might be able to switch from providing a purely transactional experience via a drive-through window, and instead provide a space that allows people to connect with others, socialize, and host frequent and informal gatherings. This is a great social benefit for customers and city residents. Please resist the pressure from businesses and developers to maintain the status quo. The impact of drive-through waiting lanes should be properly studied before going ahead with any new or existing conversion. I also want to mention that I'm really glad to see the city is moving ahead with electrifying its fleet. That's great. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next caller is Alan Hirsch. Alan, you're on air. You have three minutes.
Good afternoon, mayor and members of council. My name is Alan Hirsch. My family has owned, my folks, the property that the Starbucks submitted the application on, and that was submitted several years ago, I think, during, kind of during the height of the pandemic. And so I think there was some miscommunication with the early application that Starbucks was leading. Couple of things. The property that we own is zoned by right for the drive-through, and we, my, my folks especially, were very active in the city of Glendale 20, 30 years ago that had multiple businesses, and they worked very hard to protect that zoning over the years. I think you know the property is down the street from the city hall, and, and I think the design Starbucks has submitted would be a dramatic impact to the aesthetics and the quality of life in that area. It improves the side box, it improves the walkability, it improves visibility, and I think provides a nice amenity for everyone. It has a great outdoor patio. I'd urge you to grandfather, if the applications are processed, especially this one, it's been, you know, we were hurt with pandemics. You can see we have stores that are empty, and there's been a large investment made in this. We've had two staff reports recommending approval of the project, only to get to the design review board and be denied, which has been very, very confusing, and really some communication between staff and, and the design review board has been questioned. The big question has been traffic. And the big question on traffic is, will the car stack onto the sidewalk into the street? Starbucks has completed a traffic report, but I think the reviewing of the city traffic engineer says, no, that's not the case. The other thing is, there was a lot of comment on the traffic from other drive-throughs, other coffee drive-throughs that spills on the street. Traffic for drive-throughs is a little bit like water. It seeks its own level. If this door opens, it will alleviate traffic and stacking at those other drive-throughs, because those people that want to buy coffee at the drive-through can now go to this, drive through this close to their neighborhood. We also have letters of support from several of the residences on Orange Grove that think this would be a great amenity to their neighborhood and to their area. It creates that public outdoor space that doesn't exist. Right now, there's no community space, if you will, on, on Glendale Boulevard in this area, and if you put, and, and our property, it'll continue without public space if, if this is denied. I'd urge you to grandfather the existing application and to give direction, if possible, to the design review board as to, 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 to work with us to make this happen. We don't see why it shouldn't. The other thing is, you just had an hour conversation on electric cars, so the concerns from the groups on air quality and idling, that's gonna be overcome by technology and a vest, where the city's taking a forefront and lead and going with electric vehicles. Either people are getting electric vehicles, or I have a car that just, when you sit at a stoplight, it turns off. So I think the air quality question is moot.
Mr. Hirsch, thank you.
Our next caller is Leanne Feinberg. Leanne, you're on air. You have three minutes. Leanne Feinberg? Our next caller is Alec Bartrushov. Alec, you're on air. You have three minutes.
All right. I can't hear you. Are you talking to me?
Go ahead.
Oh, hi. My name is Alec Bartrushov. I live close to the proposed Starbucks that has been discussed. I wrote in my email to you all, I'm very insistent that we not allow for the existing pipeline projects to move forward. If you want to see a, a city with more drive-throughs, you can only, all you need to do is look at the existing Starbucks at Grandview, the existing Starbucks at Central. The, the whole issue here is that the analysis that takes place for these projects to move forward, that relies on a local traffic analysis that is provided to the city by the applicant, is flawed. The maximum allowed drive-through queuing is 200 feet, which is only 10 cars if you were. were to stack them up very efficiently. This is insufficient. Starbucks themselves has said that this is the future of their business model, and they argue, as the property owner just said, that we need more drive-throughs to alleviate the demand of existing drive-throughs. And I don't think that that's acceptable. I don't think that the neighbors of the Starbucks at Grandview think that this is an amenity. It is more of a nuisance than anything, and I don't think it's fair for the people that live east of Glendale Avenue to be subjected to land uses like those rather than living on just west of Glendale Avenue, which is on the DSP that currently has a ban on drive-throughs. So I'm hoping that you move forward with the moratorium, and please include the pipeline project because the existing analysis that takes place that approves these projects is flawed, and the DRB on more than one occasion, now twice, has rejected the proposal because of ongoing concerns from the community, but also the damaging effect of drive-throughs in the surrounding communities and what that means for our pedestrian-oriented policy priorities that we have been pushing in recent years. So please approve the moratorium, and please approve, please make sure that includes pipeline project. Thank you.
Thank you. Our final caller is Leanne Feinberg. Leanne, you're on air. You have three minutes.
Hi, good afternoon. Thank you so much for letting us all speak. My name, as they said, is Leanne Feinberg. I've been a resident in Southern California for over 25 years, and I've done many deals in your beautiful city. And I think that we can all agree that the last few years have been very challenging for all businesses and for residences, and what we have seen come out of this, and I'm a mother of a three-year-old daughter, and for me personally, it is very, it is having a drive-through and having the ability to have my family go through that, knowing that they are safe and that it is an environment that I'm not going to have any issues surrounding my children. So I do believe that drive-throughs should be allowed in the community. I think that it is a hindrance to businesses, small businesses and larger businesses when we do such moratoriums. And I think that these small businesses and large businesses such as Starbucks have, you know, they, everyone has been through such a struggle the last few years, and I think that our communities are trying to provide jobs and safety paramount to, you know, to everything. And so I would strongly encourage that the moratorium does not pass and that the pipeline project is approved, and I think that, you know, it's just the safety, the safety of our residents, the safety of the employees, and the safety of families that are trying to patron these businesses that have suffered for the last few years is just such, so critical to, you know, keep keeping our communities alive and building. And I would say that what Starbucks and other businesses are doing, right, they're taking these older properties and they're spending, you know, they're making a very large investment to beautify the property and to create jobs and to create a really wonderful amenity to the daytime that's there as well as the residences. And I, you know, I think that it's just from looking at the safety standpoint and helping these businesses come out of COVID and be able to survive is just paramount to what our, all of our beautiful communities want. So thank you so much. I certainly hope that the pipeline Starbucks project is approved and that the moratorium on any new drive-throughs does not pass, just, you know, just to help, help the safety issues of all of our families. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any other calls?
No other calls.
All right. Thank you very much. I think we've heard from everyone, and those are all the calls we will take. I will now open it up to my colleagues for their questions, comments.
Okay, I'll go. I have no questions. I'll just say I support the interim emergency, what do we call it, interim emergency ordinance? Interim urgency, sorry. The interim urgency ordinance. I do not support grandfathering the One Pipeline project. I agree with the caller that our, the current standards that we've been using for drive-throughs are problematic, and we've seen problems occur at most of the other locations where there are drive-throughs. So I would not want to have a project go through currently with, on the basis of those standards. Also, the fact that this One Pipeline project happens to be right on the border of the DSP where we have banned drive-throughs. So if it were on one side of the street, it would be banned. It's on the other side, it's not banned. I think we really need to relook at this. We know our, we have goals around reducing vehicle miles traveled and emissions. We have goals around walkability. I'm not saying that we would not allow any drive-through anywhere in the city. There may be appropriate places, but I don't think this area is appropriate, and in any case, I think we just need to step back, take a look. We've done moratoriums before to do exactly this. We've looked at them, and then we've come back and made thoughtful decisions on how we want to go forward. So I would, well, when we're ready, I'll make a motion.
Councilmember Devine, and then Councilmember Asatrian.
Okay. Well, you know, these days, I use drive-throughs quite a bit, and I haven't seen, I haven't had a problem exiting, entering, waiting. I don't turn my car off, so I'm not doing all of those things at the, you know, for the environment. It's 10 seconds and I'm, and I'm out. I do think we need a solution. I think we need a strong, I think we need to review and revise our ordinance, make it clear so that there is no question. So I would vote for the 45-day interim urgency ordinance, but this particular project that we're talking about today, they've invested a lot of money, I'm sure, in this project. They've already gone through several iterations. It is in the hands of the DRB, and I think we have to trust the DRB to do the right thing and make sure that whatever design they approve, that it is, you know, conducive to the environment. And so that would be my, my position on this one. Because they're so far into this project, I mean, I just think it's unfair to stop it. So, but I am for the 45-day moratorium so that we can revise and revisit. Those are my comments.
Councilmember Asatrian.
So I'm also for the 45-day moratorium. I don't think that I'd like to grant any exemptions. I think the last thing our communities in South Glendale need is a drive-through if we are serious about making our city more walkable and bike-friendly and adding more greens. I would prefer that over seeing a drive-through. So I guess it would, I would be supporting an amendment to optional.
All right. I will say the following. First of all, if, well, I'll just say it, I love Starbucks. I drink it often. Look, I even wore a green tie. If consumption of the coffee would result in a conflict and recusal, I would have to accuse myself, but my, my preference for Starbucks coffee is separate from what I think is in the best interest of our residents and the city. And in terms of when we look at where some of these drive-throughs are, for anyone to say that it is not having an impact on the neighborhoods, it is not having an impact on the traffic flow, independent of just even people on bicycles and walking, it is absolutely having an impact. I can't think of, except for a couple, a handful of drive-throughs in this city, most drive-throughs, especially since the pandemic, have created numerous issues within their neighborhoods. And I think of the poor residents on Bruce Avenue who had been calling us because of the spillover in their areas, and I think we're now finally installing potentially speed humps there to address some of their concerns. It creates spillover, and I use drive-throughs as well, like Councilmember Devine. I know that some of them may be quick to get through, but others certainly will take a long time. Not all drive-throughs, of course, are created equally. The old, the Starbucks where the old Rally's Burgers used to be, the terminus of Brandon, I believe it's San Fernando, plenty of space, well-designed because Rally's was designed as a purely drive-through, I think, restaurant and a walk-up restaurant. But in other places, and I don't want to call out any specific restaurants, the drive-throughs as they were designed, were designed for a pre-pandemic world. Now you go and the drive-through queue sometimes is so long that even the parking spots that are intended for people to go in to park and order and pick up from, if you go in, the line of cars is so long that it will, you may get stuck behind a row of cars not allowing you to exit out of your parking spot. You know, I think of this new Raising Canes that's in Burbank, and the spillover being so long that's just a sea of orange cones, and I don't think any of our residents want to see that here in Glendale. I think that our drive-throughs need to be reimagined. Look, if there is a pharmacy with a drive-through, I know that there are some who want to get rid of all drive-throughs, but I think it makes sense for a pharmacy to have a drive-through because you don't want someone who has a communicable disease walking and traversing throughout an entire building, all the way up to the counter, coughing and sniffling to pick up their drugs if they're going to pick up their medication from a drive-through window. I think that makes sense. It's not, I don't know of any pharmacy drive-throughs that are causing backups, but some of the more popular restaurants and establishments, like the ones we've heard about, do cause an impact on the neighborhood that I think affects the quality of life. So I would be for the moratorium, and I would include the one project that we have in pipeline in that moratorium because just because something was allowed under the old guidelines doesn't mean it's allowable in the new world or it makes sense in the new world that we find ourselves in today. There used to be a Starbucks not that far from here, by the way. It was right across from City Hall, a pretty popular one. It closed down. I don't know why. I was very disappointed. I know a lot of city employees were disappointed when it closed down. My position on this is not affected by the fact that it closed down today. I'm just saying that, you know, Starbucks can work very fine without having a drive-through component to them, and I think if in that area where they wish to have one, they decided to have a standalone one like the one on Pacific close to the freeway that also doesn't have a drive-through, I'm sure they'll find ways of making it work. They serve up fine beverages, and the public would love to have a Starbucks in their neighborhood without a drive-through. So that is my position on this. If any of my colleagues, Councilmember Brotman, you wanted to make a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion, but can I make a quick comment just to Councilmember Devine's point about the DRB because I think it might, I don't know, I thought about it when you were, when you were speaking. So they, they did go to the DRB, and they were asked to come back with a redesign without a drive-through, and they came back with a redesign which was identical or virtually identical. So DRB has spoken, but they've been told they can't speak on that. They can't make that a requirement because of our rules, and I think that's, you know, maybe one of the things that we were thinking of with respect to this, this ordinance. So anyway, I just wanted to make that point. So I would, I would move that we initiate the interim emergency ordinance.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Yes.
So procedurally, just a couple of things. The item is for introduction. So Councilmember, it could be Councilman Brotman who introduces it. Just a couple of things. The ordinance will require four-fifths vote. So if there's a difference of opinion on whether, whether to exempt the one that was in the pipeline, you know, one option is for councilmembers to introduce both options, and then it comes back next week for, for adoption, and the council will have to agree on which one to, to adopt. The other thing I just want to point out, obviously, the, the ordinance is for 45 days. I think we all understand that the staff will not have the changes in 45 days. It just typically happens, we're required to come back in that period, ask the council to extend the moratorium at that time while staff does its work. I just want to make sure that we're all clear about that.
So if there is no unanimity, unanimity on the first item, then you suggest that we split it to have the council, have a full council to see if there would be four-fifths in, as it relates to the proposal that's in pipeline?
We could, correct. We could either put it over or council can introduce both versions, one with, with the grandfathering, one without, and then it'll come back next week, and then the council will decide which one to adopt, but we need four votes to adopt either one.
Okay.
Okay. Well, let's see where we end up. I'll, I'll, oh, you're saying it's an introduction?
Yeah, it's an introduction only, so it's only one councilmember introducing the ordinance. So if, if.
You would like to introduce?
If you'd like to introduce the ordinance.
In both ways.
Without the grandfathering, I would suggest you do so, and then if any other councilmembers want to introduce it with the grandfathering, they can do so, and we'll bring both back next week.
Okay. And if we only introduce it without the grandfathering, then what happens next week? If we, we have to vote?
Well, I think it makes sense for us to bring up, bring back both.
Bring back both.
As a contingency.
Okay. Okay, so I'll initiate.
Before you.
Or I'll introduce the ordinance without grandfathering.
Okay.
And I will introduce with grandfathering.
Councilmember Asatrian.
Could I add something before you guys move forward? I was trying to get your.
What would you like to?
The, the policy analysis include information on how it impacts people with disabilities.
Let me ask staff about Councilmember Asatrian's request for the research as it how it impacts people with disabilities.
Mayor Kasakian, with the direction from council on what to study, we can certainly include that.
Okay. Is there anyone who would like to second that request?
Oh, I'll second that.
All right. So that request has been done to include that in the studies. What else are we required? Do you need another motion from us on this item? What other action? Note and file report do we need to?
Mayor Kasakian, 2B, we don't need a motion to note and file, but motion at 2B is to direct staff to do the study, so if we can get direction on that, that way the staff can go forward regardless of whether the moratorium is, the staff can go forward and do the study if that's what the council wants.
So Councilmember Asatrian made that, made a suggestion about a review as it pertains to individuals with disability. Would you like to roll that in to a motion directing staff to study and review drive-through waiting lane impacts?
Yes, please.
Councilmember? All right. So that motion has been made.
Second.
Has been seconded by Councilmember Devine. May we have roll call on that?
Councilmembers, Asatrian?
Yes.
Brotman?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Najarian? Mayor Kasakian?
Yes. So with that, the last motion, which is to note and file, would be moot since you have it.
Yes, sir.
Already you have direction. So item three. Clerk Aba Jum, please.
Item three is community development regarding alfresco dining and private parking lots. A motion directing staff to conduct study on the conversion of private parking lots to outdoor dining. B motion suspending enforcement on existing alfresco locations and private parking lots while city conducts study on conversions.
All right.
Mayor Kasakian, member of city council, as you know, during the COVID pandemic, a number of establishments converted, they were allowed to convert their private parking lots for the operation of their businesses, and Councilmember Brotman had asked, requested we bring a report back on potential for the suspension of enforcement of these use of private parking lots, as well as when Mr. Calvert makes the presentation, as well as seeking direction as to bring a report back to council with the conditions and, and the potential for a more permanent allowance of these establishments using their private parking lots. With that, Mr. Calvert?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. As mentioned, we're here to discuss the alfresco locations and private parking lots. We have a very brief presentation. Actually, could you advance the slide, please? Thank you. So first, we'll, we'll kind of give an overview of the alfresco program. There were two components of this. Again, as the city manager mentioned, this was in response to the COVID-19 pandemic, allowing restaurants to continue their operations when indoor service was limited. If you recall from a presentation we gave about a year ago when we were looking to make the alfresco program within the city's right-of-way a long-term slash permanent program, the feedback from the general public about this program in general, whether it was in, in the right-of-way or on private parking lots, was very, very positive. So as you're aware, we've moved forward with a permanent program in two other locations, and now we're, we're seeking the, the direction on how we should work with these private parking lot locations. What we're essentially What we're essentially requesting from council is a consideration to extend these existing locations while we study the impacts of any kind of permanent or long-term solutions. That can, that could include all of the existing installations that are there or any additional future ones that could be in play as well. Next slide, please. Thank you. So again, the program was launched to allow restaurants to function during those COVID-19 restrictions. The street installations, which were in the right-of-way, were along Brand Boulevard and Honolulu. Honolulu's installations are now in place, the, the permanent ones within that right-of-way. Brand, we are finalizing those designs now and working with the contractor to identify a good price point in order to get those moving forward here in the next couple of weeks to months. The private parking lot installations, those were done through a temporary occupant, occupancy certificate. That is something that actually did expire earlier this year when we came back and had the discussion about the locations that were in, that were within the right-of-way. So what we're asking for as part of this meeting is, is direction on whether or not to extend that and continue to allow those to exist within those private parking lots. Just an example of, of one of the installations, this is at the Glen Arden Club. One of the reasons why we're having these conversations, that many of these restaurants have made significant investments in these installations. These were not just temporary tables and chairs that were put up. There have been installations of, of kind of shade structures, raised platforms, really trying to create a very kind of vibrant and positive environment within these parking spaces, really kind of expanding their overall total operations. And again, as you can see, a lot of investment has been made by many of these restaurants. So the consideration for this afternoon is to suspend enforcement or really to allow the continued operations of these locations. This would allow staff to study what the overall impacts would be. What kind of mechanism would we need to allow these to be long-term or permanent installations? Again, the impacts, any restaurants that may not have it or may want it. We would want to understand the potential impacts to parking, knowing that we are taking away parking spaces from, or we're essentially losing parking spaces with these restaurants. Are there spillover impacts? Do we want to consider their relationship to the surrounding environment if they're near, say, a single-family neighborhood? Are those bringing kind of consequences to, you know, additional on-street parking, things of that nature? So really looking at those other uses, those adjacent neighborhoods. And then we would also need to develop guidelines, any requirements for any new installations. This may require some of the existing ones to go back and make improvements, make modifications to those to make sure that they are up to standard, whether that has to do with design, safety, noise attenuation, anything of that nature. So those are all elements that we would like to take the time to study while we leave these in, in place potentially. And actually, could you go to the next slide? Is it the last one? Okay. So again, we're asking for direction on whether or not to continue with these existing installations and, and direction in terms of, of studying what a long-term solution would look like.
Okay.
And that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
I'm sure there are questions. I know that there's one card submitted here. Do we have anyone on the line? So we have?
We do not have any callers.
Thank you. So with that, let me call up Randy Stevenson. Mr. Stevenson, you'll have three minutes.
Thank you. Mayor Kasakian and fellow councilmembers, my name's Randy Stevenson. I'm the president of Stevenson Real Estate Services. Our office is located on North Brand Boulevard. It's a simple question. The city won't enforce the existing code. What is the point of studying and effecting a change to the code? In the analysis section of the staff report for outdoor dining on private parking, it reads, quote, "Community development staff have received limited complaints regarding the impacts of outdoor dining, such as parking and disruption." That is an overt lie that undermines the legitimacy of the report, since it's the essential element in making a determination on these motions. Staff and city council have received at least 42 written complaints in the past 60 days. Additionally, in the past 18 months, there have been a minimum of 142 phone calls to the police department concerning outdoor dining establishments. How can anybody in their right mind call this a limited number of complaints? There has been absolutely no effort to enforce the code as it relates to these complaints. Let me assure you, when you make no effort to enforce the code and then propose changing it, it appears to the public that you're using your position of power to orchestrate the legitimization of certain businesses that could never realistically obtain an entitlement under the current code, all the while cynically shoving it in the face of those pleading for relief from the nuisance they experience on a daily basis. Why would anybody favor a minute subset of actors to the detriment of tens of businesses and hundreds of individuals, young and old, that live and work in our community? Unless you take decisive enforcement action against bad actors, the public has absolutely no reason to believe you'll do so in the future. The public would be correct in losing all faith in its city officials. Look, the guide rails for outdoor dining and, and private parking are easy. Number one, a business must legally be operating to qualify for an outdoor dining entitlement, no exceptions. Number two, a business that has been subject to disciplinary action from the ABC should be prohibited from receiving the entitlement. Number three, depending on the location, there must be hard and fast hours of operation attached to the entitlement, or a radius restriction should be implemented when outside of downtown and adjacent to residential uses. Fourth, a quote "restaurant" is not a quote "tavern" or a quote "bar." God forbid that deceitful operators granted an outdoor dining permit for a quote "restaurant" and then operates as a bar, which, by the way, is defined in code as a business that derives more than 50% of gross revenues from the sale of alcoholic beverages. There must be a condition on the entitlement that the business reported sales percentages to the city, and the city must audit those figures and certify compliance to the public. Navigating the modification to the code can be successfully accomplished, but you must vehemently enforce the existing code. Only then can the public engage in a faithful and meaningful discussion about how best to implement the policy. Otherwise, the consideration of these motions today is pure theater. And you've given the impression that in the words of William Shakespeare, "something is rotten in the state of Denmark."
Okay. Would my colleagues like to ask staff questions or comments?
I have one question.
Yes.
How can we avoid a situation like that with a study or a new code, a new ordinance?
Mayor, councilmembers, that is part of what we would need to look at, is, is the kind of performance of, of these spaces and how we enforce those regulations. I know that the concerns that were brought up by, by Mr. Stevenson, those are things that the city is investigating right now. I know the city attorney and I believe our deputy city manager can offer some additional comments on the current progress of that. But really, what we're looking at here today is whether or not, and in totality, if we want to continue to allow these to operate, and then looking at, are there certain regulations, certain rules that, that the council would wish to put in place or to investigate and maybe add on to this?
I think Mr. Stevenson made some very good comments and some very good suggestions today, so I would like to see those included, if you've gotten them down.
I have, yes.
Great, okay. Because I think we have to, I think we do need to, to look at this, the code, the ordinance, and, and make sure that we have clear, concise, and enforcement included in the, the guidelines and the requirements and, and the study. Thank you.
Councilmember Brotman and then Councilmember Al Satrian?
Yes. Are you able to share what, what the inventory of properties looks like that are, you know, where we've got the situation? I know you mentioned Glen, Glen Arden. I've been to, what, San Fernando and Pardees, and I think you said there's some more.
I just had that list here a second ago. We have approximately 21 locations across the city. And, and if I could clarify, Mr. Stevenson's comment, when, when we were discussing kind of limited complaints, when we mean in totality the number of the installations and locations, we know that we do have a handful that have caused some challenges and, but in, in, kind of in totality, we're not hearing that from all of the locations. Thank you, actually. So we have one at Glen Arden Club, New Moon, Toasted Bun, G Lounge, Regency, King's Kitchen, El Sol Restaurant, Jeremy's Coffee Shop, Max's Restaurant, Crab Avenue, Marisco's Mielindo, Sushi, Nishiyah, Kalinka, We're Pouring, Victoria's, Dyna's, Acapulco, Foxy's, and Paperback Brewery.
All parking? These are all parking?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Great. Councilmember Al Satrian?
I don't have questions, just comments.
Okay. Well, let me ask, so. I do receive the calls, or not the calls, the emails. I've seen Mr. Stevenson, your, your communications to council and to staff. I know that you spoke very impassionately about this issue. However, you said 100, the way you presented this makes it almost sound like, because you said there's been 142 calls about establishments. Are you aware of other establishments that are receiving complaints or just the one that you have communicated regarding?
Mayor Kasakian, personally verified, no, but yes, I have heard complaints about a number of establishments. When I say personally verified, the complaint has not been registered to me. The complaints that I have passed on to you have been registered to me from tenants and businesses and properties that we manage. So on an individual direct basis, again, I'd have to say no, it has not been solicited through me, but in my discussions with others, yes.
About other establishments?
Multiple establishments.
Multiple establishments around the, okay, well, all right. I, I mean, I don't, I, I have not heard complaints, and I would venture to say that we're out and communicating with the public as often as I think you are, and if not perhaps more. I know that there have been some select sites where there have been issues, but overall, I think that some of these. Some, is it sure? Please, I'll, I'll give you an opportunity.
I don't mean to imply that it's the vast majority of the cases that staff had mentioned, for sure. I, I would not make that claim, but are there isolated incidents? Yes. So while the number not, this, this isn't prolific, but it does exist.
Well, that, that makes a lot more sense because we're about to start looking at certain policy changes and things that, to try and improve the quality of life in our city, and we don't want to throw out the baby with the bathwater. With that, I'll turn to Councilmember Al Satrian for her comments.
Well, first, thank you, Councilmember Brotman, for bringing this to today's agenda. I absolutely love the idea of keeping our parking lots, anything that can help our restaurants, our small businesses, as we try to move out of COVID, I'm in support of. I didn't write down everything that Mr. Stevenson said, and so if there is going to be a motion, I need that all to be read back to me in order for me to know exactly what it is that we're voting on today and if we're supporting, and I'd like to hear from my colleagues on that. I've heard nothing but positive things about the parking lots being converted. I'm ecstatic to see that our younger people are not leaving Glendale, and they're choosing to spend their time here, and I think the outdoor settings are helping with that. And so anything we can help to encourage that and include families that live in Glendale to stay and enjoy outdoor dining in Glendale, I'm all for. So I'll wait for comments from my colleagues.
Sure. Thank you very much, Councilmember. Anyone want to make any additional comments, or is there any other questions? Councilmember Brotman?
I would, I would just say, yeah, I, I'm aware of one other establishment where I've gotten some complaints, King's Kitchen, and, and we've, we've discussed that. So I think there are isolated, there are problems, and, and we, Mr. Stevenson, I read all your messages, I've responded to a few of them, and I know staff is looking at this. We've talked about it. We know it's an issue. We're going to resolve it. So I don't want to, throwing out the baby with the bathwater is a good way to say it. You know, I think we have a generalized question, and, and people do really enjoy these outdoor dining places. I do. I go to the San Fernando, I go to Pardees, and you mentioned We're Pouring, one of my favorite places, and I've never seen any, any parking problems in those locations. So that's all. I would just say, I, I support us doing this, doing the study and figuring out how we can work with these establishments to make sure that we can have everything, right? We can, we can park our cars and we can, we can, we can sit outside and enjoy dining in, in nice environments.
Councilmember Devine?
And I agree, and I agree. I, I think, you know, out of, let's say, 100, how many did you say? 20, 21?
21.
21, we get three complaints. Those are the ones that we have to handle. We have to take care of those and make sure that the problem is solved. But I am all for studying this, developing guidelines and requirements for any new installations. Again, you know, people enjoy it. We did it for a good reason, and it ended up being a, a really good decision, and so I'm, I'm all for this.
Okay. I, I generally, I, I believe that the alfresco dining experience has been not only successful here, but around the country, in places like Seattle, Portland, that I've visited, you see some of the, some very creative and unique outdoor spaces for people to utilize. I think that we had, we put our best foot forward with the K-Rails and some of the not most visually appealing, but we spruced it up, we figured out ways, we pivoted, we adjusted, we made some nicer decks with some lighting, and I think overall now, most, almost everyone, almost everyone would agree that they've been enhancements to the quality of life, especially in a part of the country where we, we are blessed with having wonderful weather almost year-round. I want to, I, I'm, I'm interested in having staff look into how we can make some of these places more permanent. So I, I would support that in terms of the places where we have issues, it requires to look into and see how we can find a happy medium between the businesses and the neighbors. I'm confident that we'll be able to find ways for everyone to coexist harmoniously. So with that, would any of my colleagues wish to put forward a motion?
I'll, I'll make a motion to suspend enforcement and allow continued operation while staff studies.
If, if I may add, with a codicil to look into all of the suggestions that we've heard today and investigate those feasibility.
Is the, is the motion for both items, one is to do the study and the second is to suspend enforcement related to use of the parking for the alfresco? Those are the two separate motions, but they're related?
How long would the suspension of park, parking, how long would that be for? How long of a period of time are we talking about here?
So we would aim to get something back to the city council in the next four to six months with a, a kind of set of recommendations regarding guidelines and future direction?
I could, I could live with four, four to six months. Six would be pushing it, four would be better.
We'll aim for four.
Under, you know, taking into consideration that holidays will soon be upon us. Because I, I also do feel, and, and, you know, we've had this conversation, that a lot of our restaurants have bounced back pretty comfortably, and some of them had outdoor dining spaces to begin with. The alfresco in my mind was mainly for those restaurants that really did not have an option, and when the rules came down, we had to give them some sort of reprieve. All right. So would you accept that? Councilmember Al Satrian? You, you were the one who made the motion?
I made the motion. I mean, as long as it's just part of a study, right? We're not, yeah.
Okay, sure. And then you seconded it?
I did.
All right, so there's been a motion and a second. Let's have roll call.
Councilmembers, that's Satrian?
Yes.
Brotman?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Mayor Kasakian?
Yes. Thank you. And with that, that is all we had on that item. I'd like to entertain a motion for adjournment?
Move to adjourn. I'll second.
All right, second, thank you. And we'll wait till we call our city council meeting to order to read the closed session items. All right, may we have roll call, please?
Yes. Councilmembers, that's Satrian?
Here.
Brotman?
Here.
Devine?
Here.
Najarian? Mayor Kasakian?
Here. Can you please read the closed session items into the record?
Yes. The first closed session item is public employee appointment director of community development. C, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure litigation pursuant to paragraph subdivisions D2 and E2 of section 54956.91, potential case. And D, conference with real property negotiators. City negotiators attending the closed session are Rubek Olanyan, John Taktalian, Bradley Calvert, Jason Bradford, Michael J. Calvert, Jason Bradford, Michael J. Garcia, and Gillian Van Miden. Property location, 216 South Brand Boulevard. Negotiating parties, museum of neon art. Instructions to the negotiators will concern the price and terms for the lease of property.
All right. Do we anticipate reporting out on any of these items?
Mr. Mayor, we anticipate reporting on item 1B, and we may report on item 1D.
All right. Let's recess to closed session. Thank you.